Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several announcements tonight, two of them including scheduling public hearings, which will be held on June 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. First one is scheduling a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 148 nuisances. Mary Ann, did you want to give the two-minute background history?
Okay. Don't tell me, but what it adds to the list of unnecessary noises in the village are gas-powered leaf blowers. There's no effect on electric leaf blower. And gas-powered leaf blowers can't be used except in the listed circumstances. So as a general matter, they can be used only during the spring and fall cleanup periods, which is defined as March 15th through May 15th, and that's September 15th through December 15th. And then only between 8:00 and 5:00 Monday to Friday, and 10:00 and 4:00 Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. They can also be used on multifamily and cluster residential developments and attached to one-family dwelling developments, like townhouse developments. They can be used between 9:00 AM and noon, Monday through Friday night at all, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. And then they can be used by local tennis clubs, municipal school employees, doing their regular duties, provided that they can't be used within 100 feet of the nearest residence. They can be used any time when responding to an emergency or when removing snow. Additionally, the walk behind leaf blowers, the ones you push, can't be used at all unless the property that's being cleaned is greater than one half acre, so greater than 20,000 square feet. And only one handheld or backpack leaf blower may be used at a time unless the property that's being cleaned is greater than one half acre. So even during that period, March to May, and I think, what was it, September to December, during the times you can use it, you can only use it fine unless your property is greater than 20,000 square feet. And then all gas-powered leaf blowers have to meet whatever are the current Environmental Protection Agency standards, which are mainly exhaust standards. It provides a fine of $100 for the first offense, $250 for any subsequent offense, and the person fined is the property owner or the tenant whose property the leaf blower has used. And then finally, the local law will take effect July 1st, 2017, because remember that the only time you'd use it in the spring is March 15th through May 15th, but to give people, because it's getting a little late getting passed, it wouldn't be effective until July 1st. So people will have about a month after the thing is passed to be able to do their spring cleanup with a gas-powered leaf blower.
And, you know, I think what I think I'll add is that we're not exactly leading the pack here. Most of our surrounding municipalities have similar laws in place already. Even here, we tried to do this 18 months ago or so, maybe two years ago?
Plus four years ago.
Maybe four years ago.
Six years ago.
We've kind of had some fits and starts with it.
Right, well, yeah.
You know, and we had some other goals, like our mulching process and things, that we wanted to kind of make sure were smooth before we got back to this. So, you know, I think that while this has been on the back burner, it moved to the front by several residents, you know, asking us for help with this, that, you know, the leaf blower, especially in the smaller, tighter communities or sections of the village, you know, it's just really impacting their quality of life in kind of the nice weather. So I will make a motion to hold a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 148 nuisances of the Irvington Code to limit the use of leaf blowers on June 5th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
I just want to remind everyone that we need to get, reach out to the various commercial businesses out there, that larger commercial businesses that may have an impact. We don't know, for instance, how this might impact the Trent, the Astrobuck folks or the Bridgetown folks. Even though they don't have, Bridgetown doesn't have a lot of trees, they may have the same issue with clearance of sidewalks and stuff for safety's sake. And if that's the case, then we have to, we'll have to consider extending the exception for classes of, you know, for a class of commercial properties, I think.
Sounds good. Next announcement is a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 224 zoning. And nine, Board of Architecture Review to implement the Irvington Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations. This will also be June 5th, 2017. So there's kind of two parts to this. There's the actual Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations, as well as the amendment of the actual, you know, law itself to take this into consideration. So I don't know if you want to talk about that relationship, if you want. I mean, the law itself is, you know, fairly straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, if somebody else wants to talk about the design guide...
Connie might give a little history of the kind of guy.
But, but I think probably, the reason you don't have to have a public hearing on the design guide is there's not going to be a law, it's not going to be a local law, it's a guide. I imagine you'll adopt it the same, and it only makes sense to adopt it the same night that you, but that would be by resolution. It doesn't have to be a local law with notice and everything, that you would enact the local law that implements it. And the reason those need to be, it needs to be a public hearing, because there'll be an amendment to the zoning code and an amendment to the ARB chapter of the code. So the first, the first part would be the amendment that says that any construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, or expansion of any building in the Historic Overlay District must be approved by the ARB. The requirement shall not apply to repairs that don't affect the exterior of a building nor shall it apply to repairs or replacement in kind, and in kind replacement is defined. This isn't really a change, because under the code, the way it is now, if you do anything that's going to be an alteration of the building, it has to go to the ARB. But there is this section under the Historic Overlay District about approval by the ARB for demolition, so it only makes sense to also have a section saying it has to go to the ARB. So really, that's not so much a change in the law as it is, as it is a clarification. Then, that the other main set of changes are to Section 911 of the ARB chapter, after the previously done, the demolition in the Historic Overlay District. Now it's just going to be called Historic Overlay District. The demolition stuff will stay the same, but there's two new provisions that say, one, the first one, in reviewing any application to reconstruct, alter, repair, or expand a contributing building in the Historic Overlay District, the applicant in the Board of Architectural Review shall be guided by the Irvington Historic Design Guide and Recommendations. And Connie will tell you what's in there, you know, but I mean, it's a document, you know, anybody interested should read, it's a really very, very good, common, user-friendly document. And then there's the same provision, there's a provision for contributing buildings in the Historic District and non-contributing buildings in the Historic District. There are some things in the design guidelines about non-contributing buildings, but mainly how they fit in with the rest of it, but they're different things. Okay. Then, and I just need to tell the board that on page five of this local law, it's been corrected for the public. In italics, it has a provision in italics about if only a substantial portion of the building is getting demolished, indicating that there's a change now, but the change was already made. It just shouldn't be in here in italics, it's already number one. I sent Mary a corrected version of that. When I was reading through this tonight, I noticed, for the same reason, I noticed it. Okay. And then the last change, kind of big changes, is it says that if somebody is aggrieved by the ARB's disapproval of an application related to the Historic Overlay District, they can appeal their decision to the Board of Trustees. Appeals from other ARB decisions are to the zoning board for appeals, but this provides that the Board of Trustees...
So did you want me to shrim in here a little bit?
Yeah, give a quick history, history of kind of how, you know, who put it together, what it was.
So, yeah, as Mary Ann mentioned, the design guide is, is a user-friendly with lots of pictures.
Great history of the village.
Yes, has the history, has...
Lots of pictures in here.
It's, it's an incredible document, and the committee that has worked on this, that was tasked with doing this, well, when the committee was formed in 2013, it's called the Historic District Committee. And the members on that are people you may know, some live in the Historic District, many do, some live in small houses in the district, some live outside of the Historic District, some are professionals in the design world, some are not. But that committee has worked for the last two years with the task they were tasked to do, amend the document to be used by the village for getting a, getting an overview of how to maintain something that people in Irvington say all the time that they think is important here, that we maintain the character of the Village of Irvington. Actually goes back to, what, 2003 and the comprehensive plan that we, some of us have been dealing with. So there's been a long history of wanting to get some emphasis, to keep that emphasis on the uniqueness of the village and its very, very rich history. So, so the committee worked for all this time and then brought in a professional, Stephen Tilly, to kind of finish off this document. And they compared it to many other design guides that many communities have, after his cold springs. There are many, many communities that have this, but it was a very strong feeling here in this committee that it would be nothing like what you might think if you bought a house in Nantucket, for example, where things are, colors and types, and, you know, when you buy there, you know you have to have a house like that. Irvington is eclectic, it's got all kinds of styles, and in this guide, this document, this design guide, the different styles are described, the differences between commercial buildings in town and residents, so there are different section of it, and it's all color-coded. So that document is, in this proposed legislation that Mary Ann just described, is referenced so that not only can it be used by the public, you can learn an incredible amount, even the, what is it, the vocabulary in the back, you would learn all this lingo that design people use. But by having, having this document play a role, not only in general with the public, but also so that our land use boards, but particularly the Architectural Review Board, that board will know that when somebody is proposing to make changes in the Historic District, that their architect, their design people themselves, even people who want to buy a house here, would, would see this document and say, this is, this is the roadmap, this is what you could expect in Irvington if you plan to do some alteration, or if you're even going to buy a house, you'd like to know kind of what the ground rules are. So to link, to link that document to what the ARB is inspired by or references, is guided by, is how the legislation links back to this document. I would suggest that when we put this out to the public, we make sure that both links are there, so that when people come to the, it's going to be June 5th, the hearing, right, that they see, they read the document, the guide, the design guide, as well as the legislation, because you can't really understand the legislation if you don't know what's in there. But I can even, you know, reference certain sections that would be, it's about 40-some pages, I think. So only a few sections would be really critical to understanding how it would be used. It was a great effort to take out words that were like, "should" or "must." So it's, it's not something that has that kind of feel, like you could think of something like Nantucket probably says, "You should use these five colors." If you've listened to the presentations, we've had three presentations to our board. They made quite an emphatic point that they have no interest in telling anybody or suggesting any colors or anything, so everybody can leave that worry aside. But, I don't know, is that...
As you said, we had three presentations in public. One kind of preliminary one, a very detailed page-by-page one, six months ago, five months ago, and then just last Wednesday, we had another fairly detailed presentation, you know, of the document. And it is very user-friendly, it's actually kind of a pleasure to flip through. It's not, it's not, you know, legalese and it's not code, it's a picture, there's a lot of pictures. I learned a lot about architecture, I learned a lot about history in it, so, you know, I think that you take a look at that, and we will make sure it's prominently displayed on the...
But I'll, I'll reference the parts that I, I think, and you can decide, Brian, how you want to present it to the public, but there are a couple of paragraphs that link particularly to how best it is linked to the, to the legislation.
So I will make a motion to have a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 224 zoning. And nine, Board of Architectural Review to implement the Irvington Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations on June 5th, 2017, 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now, much easier to understand. Spring Fest is this Saturday, May 20th, 2017, at Matheson Park. It's from 2:00 to 9:00 PM. This is a very family-friendly day in the park. There's going to be a lot of rides for the kids. There's going to be food trucks. Jimmy Sopster's going to have two trucks, because the lines were too long last year. There's going to be like bouncy castles kind of things, slides. There's, I believe, six bands, including Gil Paris and Jesse Lambiassi, the Stories, which are, you know, locally famous. Divining Rod is just another locally famous band. So it's going to be, it's going to be a fun day. There is a $10 admission for adults, children under 14 are free. There's a charge for the Fun Zone, which I think is $10 a kid, or 25 for three kids, something like that. But it is sponsored by FACE, which is the fundraising and community events. They obviously use the money for other events, they use the money for less fortunate residents to help them with summer camp and holiday baskets and Thanksgiving baskets and that sort of thing. So it's a fun day, but it also has a, has a good cause. So that's this Saturday, May 20th. So far, the weather looks good. That's always the wild card, but this wasn't last Saturday.
Brian, I would just mention that Matheson will be closed to the general public that day, and there is a $10 admission for the Spring Fest.
Correct. And then another event, Memorial Day. The ceremonies and the parade will be, of course, on Memorial Day, Monday, May 29th, starting at 10:45 AM at the Main Street Memorials. A quick synopsis of our ceremony that we've had for as long as I can remember. We have ceremonies here at the monuments on Main Street, and then there's actually a parade, there's a march down to Memorial Park, where we typically have a speaker. This year, the speaker is a major who's currently a professor at West Point, who's just going to be talking about his experiences, so it should be, it should be an interesting afternoon and more, actually morning, 10:45 AM. And lastly, Celebrate Irvington, looking a little bit ahead to Sunday, June 18th, which is Father's Day. But it's also, there's going to be events all around town. You want to give a one-minute synopsis on that?
Well, yeah, just quickly. So it's something to celebrate every couple of weeks. But this is a Main Street festival, and we're seeing it as a community, multi-generational, some school involvement, some, some business involvement, and a lot of history involvement with a trolley. Trolley's actually a bust, but it was a great hit over the last three years, and the trolley always is full. It loops around and there's a duncing on the trolley, so that you learn about the history of Irvington. And then, this year, something different is just the up and down Main Street, to have transportation if you find it hard to walk up the hill. Down is fine, but, so we'll have that as an added, and some artwork for the kids, some involvement with Riverkeeper, which is a great organization. They're interested in partnering up with us this year. So keep watching the website, and if you have a classic car, by all means be in touch. We have a little classic car meetup.
And Brian, I was going to add to that, that the Second Annual Walk Safe Video, Walk Safe Video Festival is currently, the contest is open, and it's going to run through the 5th of June for students in 6th to 12th grade. There's information at Slowdown Irvington Facebook page, and we're going to do what we did last year, which is on Celebrate Irvington Day at noon in Village Hall. The mayor will be giving out the awards and will be screening the reel of entries and winners. It was pretty fun last year for that, and so we're looking forward for, to see what comes in this year.
I'll put that on my, from the mayor's desk as well. We also have checks, over $25,000. Per our policy, we had two checks that required dual signatures. First one was paid to Schultz Ford, which was two DPW satellite trucks, which came out of the capital budget, for $77,790. And the second one, which was from this week, just before the deadline, was Allied World Specialty Insurance Company, which was part of the exterior Village Hall renovation progress payment, also from the capital budget, and that was $109,915. So we've had good, good progress in the project after, let's see, went a long delay, but we've just got the new, the old doors, the old doors, the old, the old doors are back on the front of the building. So far, I think a highlight for me has been, Larry pointed it out today, the old scenery door on the east side of the building. It looks brand-new, and it's, you know, it's not, but it looks, it may, to renovate those, because I thought those were just running wood, so. Looks great, looks great. And then Mark, anyone else?
No, just remember to drop by Village Hall if you'd like to get some of these new generation of Slowdown Irvington signs. These are the retro version for the spring with the blue sky and, and the reclining rip, and they're available up in, in the back upstairs in, by the village administrator. Karen has, has them to give out. And there's also reflective bracelets for safety, for when you're riding at night or walking, or walking the dog at night, or whatever you're doing. And we still have some left, amazingly, quite a few have been given out, and they're available at Village Hall through Karen, and they're available at the police department and at the rec center. And they're free.
Next, we have, anyone else have announcements? Correspondents, we have none, so we'll open it up to public comment.
Caesar Madfretti, President of Half Moon South Co-ops. Thank you for the leaf blower alterations. I think that'll work for us. You said, Mark indicated reaching out to the commercial properties. I suggest you reach out to some of the landscapers in the area that may be impacted by this. Also, from the planning board perspective, the new procedures for the ARB and the Historic District, it may be worthwhile pointing out a entry point for an applicant, so they don't get bounced around. And Mark, you know what I'm talking about. The experience of our friends up here at Allstate should not be repeated. There needs to be a timeline, an entry point, where it goes, who's got, who does what between the planning board and the, and the ARB, so that it can work through the way it's intended and come out with a product without too much labor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for the other thing.
Anybody else? Please, sir.
I'm not sure, but...
Just give us your name and your, where you're working.
I'm Carolyn, okay? I live at 61 Main Street. The Village Code recently came to my attention, that it existed and was... So I checked it out, because I live above one of the restaurants on Main Street, and the, their speakers, their sound system in their dining room are in their ceiling, and that's my floor. And in the Village Code, Chapter 148 nuisances, Section 4, Unnecessary Noises, says that businesses in the waterfront zone or in the mixed residential business zone cannot create noise that disturbs the peace, quiet, and comfort of neighboring inhabitants between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And I'm often calling them at 11 o'clock at night, asking them to turn it down, which I've done for years, which I didn't mind doing, but like, I feel like I shouldn't have to do that anymore, especially since it's in the code.
Sure.
If you want to give me a call tomorrow or later this week, and I'll get some details from you, just so we can follow up on it.
I just wanted to try to see if they can move the speakers.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can make some contact, I, you know, I don't know, forget about codes and all that, let's see if there's something we can do to intervene.
What's, what's your direct number for, to reach you, Larry?
It's on the website, but 591-4358. So, and my email's on the website also, so either way.
And then I have a few, two more complaints about them, about cleaning the sidewalk. I've been taking pictures of the same stains on the sidewalk since April, and the sidewalk cafe brewing pedestrian traffic, and photos of that as well.
Great, okay. I'll give you a sheet right here, real quick.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi.
Who?
Anne Altman, for everything. I'm, I'm happy that you have the gas leaf blower draft started. I've been studying this now for two years, and I'm glad it's just a draft, because it's really not going to do very much to protect the children and the rest of us from the exhaust fumes and the poison that comes out of these engines that are overlooked because they're not cars. So, for example, I've been jotting down dates and times. I know Kathy had been in communication with Mark about that. So I started on May 1st, and it was 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM every day, and at some points, for example, on May 3rd, every house next to my house, bust them 500 feet from me, what every, everyone had a landscaper. Now, in Spiro Park, there are probably five or six landscaping companies that have a block on this business. Many of the residents aren't home when the noise is going on, but I'm home, so my question would be how you would protect us from someone's preference on how their lawn is being kept. It's been a long time since I've been in the suburbs, because I did live there in the 70s and early 80s, and we didn't have these machines. I'm sure many of you did not grow up with this noise or pollution, and your children didn't either, but I'm wondering how we're going to protect my children and other families who are moving here, because it's a safe place to live. I registered the, the noise from my window, 500 feet away, from this one company called Five Brothers, that does four houses in a row. They were there for four hours. It was 75 decibels from the inside of my house, which was bothering me, and it turns out, yes, it's bothering me, because it's actually damaging my hearing. So that day, my daughter wanted to use her little watering can, we were going to plant sunflower seeds, and we couldn't leave the house. So that was probably the most depressing and saddest day since I've moved here, that, because people want these lawns, and I'm not going to say they're nice lawns, because it's not the way that, I don't like the lawns. Like, if I see a little yellow flag that says pesticides, it's not a nice lawn, so I don't let my kids walk on lawns like that, go anywhere near that. But if I had, if someone has a preference for this type of lawn, I would liken it to a manicure. If you said, "May I go into this place and, and get these chemicals, can I breathe these chemicals and work on my manicure?" Can I breathe these chemicals and work on my manicure?", I would say, "Yes, go for it. Go in there." But this is something that affects the air that we all breathe. So I'm not really sure why landscapers get a pass when it comes to noise violations and pollution violations. We just, I think everyone in this town has been listening to that noise too long, and they just can't think straight or hear straight. So I think Irvington has a chance here to be more of a hero and get ahead of things, not just toe the line with the rest of the towns, because this means eight to six, I can't leave my house or I have to go somewhere else.
Not during the period. It's gotta be a complete ban from May 15th to December.
Right, I'm talking about the other seven months of the year. So, walking to Dow's Lane, we're a block away, there's six landscaping companies. They all have masks and earphones, and I'm wondering how I'm supposed to protect my daughter from this. So I went to the hardware store to buy this stuff, and they said, "Well, maybe I'll find out. I'll ask people how we're supposed to protect each other about this." So I look forward to June 5th, and I'll share the information that I've been, you know, keeping track of. But this is a chance for us to do something great, and I hope we can improve what's there right now. Thank you.
I'm not sure she under...
No, at least you're saying, not just for the period that we're talking about. She wants them banned all the time, forever.
No, no, no. But you're talking about the other seven months. They can't be used at all in those other seven months. You understand that, right? So they can only be used fall and spring. Right, okay.
My name's Dave Sellar, I'm from the Spiro Park neighborhood as well. I actually sent a correspondence previously on the same issue. And I do recognize that there is a ban, but effectively, it's sort of like, it reminds me of like a smoking ban, by saying that you're only allowed to use one at a time. It's like saying, we've banned smoking in restaurants, but you're only allowed to smoke one cigarette at a time. Because the amount of pollution that one of these leaf blowers gives off is actually more, it's usually a two-stroke engine. It shoots out about a third of the gas that is in the tank on its use. And that is, you know, looking into some of this statistics, that's the same amount of pollution that comes out of a Ford Raptor truck that's driven 3,900 miles. Now, that's in 30 minutes of running one of these things. And a lot of these guys use about two or three of them. Not only are you speeding an insane amount of stuff into the air, you're also looking at, you know, a very large and loud noise. But, so I actually would beg the board, which I actually appreciate the motion and the fact that this is coming forward and you are addressing this. I think that's to be commended. But I think that to put this into law or as a nuisance, I don't think it should be considered a nuisance. This is actually a public safety, health issue, way above a nuisance issue. For example, they use a backpack blower at Dow's Lane Elementary, where I have a first grader. On the same model of the backpack that they use, that, you know, from the town, the first thing on the owner's operator manual says, "The engine exhaust from this product contains chemicals known to the state of California to cause cancer, birth defects, and other reproductive harm." And that has been used at our elementary school. So for Irvington involved in this as a safety issue, not necessarily as a nuisance, I don't think this should be painted as, oh, they're too loud, because they are, and it's not safe. 65 dB is what Dobbs Ferry, my question to the board would be, why is there no, there's no sound level? Because a lot of times, the sound, if you pull it pro throttle, that's 100 dB. If you're using it halfway, 75, 85 dB. And in a conversation, it's 65, less than that. So Dobbs Ferry has an actual dB reading listed in their ordinance, because who is to determine what's a nuisance without any formal reading? Because that could curb more than one thing. So I would beg to include that language into the law when you do do that. My other question is, in terms of enforcement, does it then turn into a neighbor versus neighbor situation, where I'm calling the police on my neighbor if I see more than one gas leaf blower going during the season where it's permitted? Because I really don't think that this is necessarily about the noise and everything. If it was being used with a battery-operated electrical one, it wouldn't be nearly as loud. You know, I believe the gentleman mentioned that we should be discussing this with the landscaping companies that frequent the town. I actually can only, I only know of one that actually has a mailing address in the town of Irvington. So the rest of these companies are coming in to our neighborhood, wreaking havoc, and then leaving. So, you know, there are also mandatory contracts that they make people sign to say that we're coming two times a week sometimes, sometimes once every two weeks. So we're sort of at the mercy of these companies that aren't even based in Irvington. You know, and so I would also say that we'd have to reach out to these people, because I've had instances where the homeowners have told them to stop doing it, and then they go to work, and they do it anyway. You know, because the landscapers, the guys that are there, it's the management of the landscapers. I mean, honestly, they gotta know that Irvington doesn't, isn't, we're not gonna sit by idly while they do that. It's the way I would approach it. But other than that, you know, the language, the way it reads in the draft, sounds like it's considering kind of something that a homeowner, if you wanna go, what this is, these are major operations where they come in with riding mowers and all, it's really, it's a commercial versus homeowner issue, rather than my neighbor as a gardener issue. So, again, I wanna thank you for your service and for addressing this issue.
Thank you.
I didn't catch your last name, sorry.
Oh, Sellar, S-E-L-L-A-R. Thank you. Anyone else? You're good? All right. Next is the consent agenda. I'm gonna have to talk about those comments. Who has on, make a motion to approve the consent agenda? You have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Next up, approval of non-union salary modifications?
Yes. I just sent the email late in the day. They'll just do some omissions for clarification.
Thank you. Any here doing that already?
That was in the one that was in the email.
Correct, send the lens, I haven't looked at it.
Yes.
Did she, anyone to that? All right, anyone? No, I'm good, thanks.
This reflects the increase that would be equal to what the non-union CSEA received.
Union CSEA.
Union.
Right. Any questions or comments on this? Resolve to modify the annual salaries and hourly rates effective on the date shown below as detailed below. I've got a second. I'll make a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm aye. I'm sorry, we already voted, I know, I just have a question on the left page of the modification. There's two, the two lines look exactly the same, but with different amounts.
One should be 2015, and one is 2016. I need to change the dates.
Oh, okay, so the larger one should be 16.
Correct.
I see that we got an increase.
What's that?
I said, I see we got an increase.
That's on page three.
Exactly.
Authorization to include certain unpaid water rents and penalties in the 2017-18 annual tax levy.
Yeah, what these represent are accounts which have not paid in the past budgetary year. These people have been notified monthly, and they receive then two warning letters telling them that if they don't contact our office, they'll pay, they'll be transferred to the tax bill.
Can I ask, I mean, I have two questions, and I've asked this before, but I'll ask it again. Well, the first one I haven't asked before. Is there any net disadvantage to the village to have to wait this long to collect the money? I mean, is it fair and square once it's on the tax rolls? Or is there some downside of having to wait so long?
Well, the penalty structure that you have for water bills is a flat fee, so from the day you're late, it's a 10% fee. So to the extent that the fee doesn't escalate over the course of a year, there's no added benefit of us waiting. So I guess the negative of that is that there is a, there's no benefit for it being out there. By transferring it over to the tax bill, one, the water department becomes whole for that money, and two, the money then actually gets transferred to something that will accumulate additional penalties if it is not paid currently, along with their tax bill as well.
Well, I guess, maybe you misunderstood what my underlying concern, my underlying comment is about, is what benefit is to a resident not to pay? And if, you know, and it sounds like to the village, the negative might be that we're not collecting the interest on money that we could be collecting. I don't know what else there is.
Yeah, I mean, that's the negative. There's, I mean, I'm not sure that there's any benefit for a resident not paying, except the fact that if they're late one day, maybe they're thinking that they might as well be late 365 days.
I guess what bothers me is I see some of the same names on this list as last year and the year before. It's almost as if some people don't pay even paying their water bill, except if this decides it's better just to throw it in with their tax bill. So, I mean, if there's no net downside to the village one way or the other, then it's a moot point.
It's a minor, it's, I won't say burden, it's an administrative process that we have to go through, but we're going through it anyway. It's hard to say. I mean, the only other remedy that we have for owners that don't pay the bills on time is to shut the water off. And, you know, that's, not to say that we won't do it, we've done it in the past, but it really is not a routine process.
I'm not suggesting that, I just don't understand.
Well, I don't either, but...
It gets collected within the year. Our uncollected rate is like, I can't even, wait, it's like 50,000 all our back years of liens, so it does get collected within 12 months as a tax lien.
Right, I think Mark's trying to understand why someone would just let it ride that way, and as long as they're willing to pay the 10%, which is not a small penalty when you look at somebody's...
And also the interest rates they're getting in the bank for keeping it.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we got another six months. Half the payment is due in June, the other half in December.
And they're not legally allowed to write off in their taxes anyway. I mean, that's a...
Well, great, yeah. I mean, you're asking for me to speculate why people don't pay the taxes. It's hard to do that, but...
Well, I mean, it's not...
It uses a lot of the same names.
And that's what, you see, it seems to me like someone must have, either they're just very lackadaisical about paying their taxes, or that there's some net benefit.
They save snap money.
I don't think there's a net benefit. If there is, it's pretty imperceptible.
All right. So there's no reason to have a wall of shame, then?
This is a public meeting, it's kind of a wall of shame.
We don't read their names.
Thank you.
Good. Well, it is on the website.
It is on the website. Whereas certain customer accounts of Irvington Water Department carry unpaid water rents and penalties, and whereas Village Law, Section 11-1118, rents and penalties in the annual tax levy, now therefore be it resolved to authorize the village clerk treasurer include the following unpaid water rents and penalties on 2017-18 annual tax levy totaling $78,909.66 as detailed below, with a low of $179.13 to a high of $23,968.76. We've got a total of $78,909.66. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
I just noticed my name's up now.
Yeah, all the trustees are on it.
So that's one year's water.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of water.
Someone's got a very extensive irrigation system.
Very clean. This is always, to me, feels like something from Nottingham Forest. Approve the tax warrants. I should mail it to a troop. Approval of the 2017-18 Nottingham?
Let it cut. Can you do it, though?
Yeah, exactly. He was always the bad guy. I don't wanna be the bad guy. This is just a formal way to collect the money, right?
Yeah, 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 but your choices, Rob, and your paths from the rich, it's true.
This gives me authorization to render a tax bill to these people, and what you have here are the regular taxes plus the water amounts that were added to the bills. And we have one exemption removed where the people have moved. There's an exemption, we sent them a bill, they didn't pay, so it goes on the taxes. It comes to a total of $14,47,242.
But that's all of us.
And 30 residents.
I mean, that's the village tax.
Correct. That's the bill that will go out.
Do you have a fancy one for me to sign? Do you want some?
I do have another one in my office.
I got parchment paper.
It's on a stone. It's a brickstone.
I have a quick stamp with like a wax seal. Resolve, board of trustees approves 2017-18 tax warrant. It authorizes the mayor to execute said warrant, delivers the same to the tax collector. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
A little second.
Maybe everyone's on board of that one.
Maybe Janus here.
All in favor? Authorize expenditures in advance of the 2017 capital budget adoption. The prequel to the capital budget?
Yeah, there's one, well, the capital budget will be adopted basically in June, and we had one project that we started before the close of our year. So when we get audited, the orders are gonna ask me, "By what authorization did you have to start this expenditure?"
We didn't have.
This is pretty much giving me the authorization to open this capital budget that we know is gonna be funded in June with the regular budget. It was just an advantage to us to start some exploratory work on it. The expenses were very few, but regardless, I still need the authorization.
So it's not even the dollar amount, it's just actually opening up the account.
It was a couple of hundred dollars.
We're careful.
Either it's now or it gets written up later.
Whereas it has been identified necessary to engage in professional services relating to sidewalk improvements on Hudson West. Resolve to authorize clerk treasurer to establish a capital project number 336 in advance of the adoption of 2017 capital budget, at which time the projects will be funded. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
There might actually be a few dollars of legal fees, actually probably more than the engineers at this point, because that's where all the work's been, with all the easements and everything.
So we're getting, let's see, project, huh?
Have you had to pay off the district attorney or something?
No.
Resolution in opposition to the president's proposed budget eliminating the National Endowment for the Arts and the National Endowment for the Humanities. I guess we're joining our other neighboring municipalities again in supporting the arts and opposing their budget cuts, I think is the simplest way to say it. I think everyone on this board appreciates the arts. Maybe also all kind of editorialized a little. We realize that this is, I would say, not even a drop in the bucket, it's actually the sweat on the side of the bucket. And to me, it's completely symbolic, so we're making a symbolic gesture right now.
One thing to point out, the village itself and the town hall theater don't directly receive funding through this. Maybe there has been in the past, very small. But the organizations that rent the theater often receive funds through this, so that's where the request was backed up. You made the decision on your own, but the theater's in full support of this, of course, for that reason.
Should use a theatrical voice to read it. Whereas President Trump's proposed budget calls for the elimination of the National Endowment for the Arts, NEA, and the National Endowment for the Humanities, and whereas eliminating funding for the NEA, which represents 0.004% of the federal budget, will not even begin to scratch the surface of the nation's fiscal challenges, but will have a devastating effect on the ability of many Americans to access the arts in their communities. And whereas 65% of the NEA's direct rents go to small and medium-sized arts groups, similar to those that frequent the Irvington Town Hall Theater, and which are often the only source of arts funding in many suburban, rural, and underserved communities. And whereas 40% of the NEA's support activities take place in middle and lower-income neighborhoods, and every dollar invested by the federal government in the NEA is supplemented on average by $7 from other funding sources. And whereas eliminating funding for the NEA will not materially hurt Broadway or Hollywood, but will hurt small-town theaters, museums, senior residences, and community arts organizations. And whereas eliminating funding for the NEA hurts veterans who experience the healing power of the arts through their participation in NEA-funded creative arts therapies. And whereas without the NEA, there'll be less creativity, less imagination, and less freedom of expression, which hurts everyone, but especially our youth in local after-school programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees strongly opposes this extreme and narrow-sighted budget... trustees strongly opposes this extreme and narrow sighted budget proposal, and calls on the bipartisan support of the arts in Congress to overwhelmingly reject it. The village board of trustees also calls on every municipality to demand the equal access to education through the arts, continue to be available to all, and to join the nonpartisan campaign of the Creative Coalition at hashtag #righttobeararms, which supports, bear arts, sorry, geez, that's a, a little, a little too clever.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly, which supports the right of every citizen to access to the arts, and be it further resolved that the village board of trustees directs that a copy of this resolution before to Congressman Nita Lowey, Senator Charles Schumer, and Senator Kristen Gillibrand.
By the way, I have to say that my doodles are brought to you by the NEA.
This is why I got two colors, yeah. Uh, I guess I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
I think Mark should second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Remove, sorry.
Did you say something?
Absolutely.
Um, just in response to the fact that this doesn't directly affect us and only the group that uses theater, nevertheless, there is a little we can do, we have to do what we can on this local level, and I think this is an important statement that we make.
I think, you know, there are organizations in Westchester County that get NEA funded, so, uh, it's, you know, that's the larger community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let me think about how small Westchester is, really, you know, it, it could all be one big town. Next is removal of Irvington Fire Company member. Resolve to remove Stephen Ingles as a member of the Irvington Fire Company. I will make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck to you, Steve. Appointment of personnel in the Department of Public Works.
So, uh, the two individuals here that are being recommended for appointment are, as the memo says, replacing two very long-term employees, um, in our public works department. So, the, as per, as per contract, the, uh, the position of motor equipment operator was posted, so other union members had a first shot at it, but there were none that were qualified, that had the required CDL license. So, the two people here were interviewed, Greg Nielsen is, is very satisfied and is recommending our appointment. Just of note, the two individuals here are being appointed under the new CSEA union contract, which carries with it a different salary schedule, uh, and some other benefits that have been modified from the previous contract.
Committee service, Wong and as well as the Caporal Brothers.
That is true.
Resolve to make the following appointments to the Department of Public Works effective May 16, 2017, subject to completion of probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. Joseph Galano, our, uh, annual salary 52,545 dollars, status motor, uh, equipment operator. Steve Cipriano, 52,545 dollars, motor equipment operator. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good luck, guys.
Absolutely.
Yeah, big shoes.
Whoa, yeah.
There is a, a two-week overlap on trainings, the Caparals are retiring, I think, June 2nd, so that's why we're trying to get this in front of you now.
Uh, next is reports of boards, standing committees, and officers. Trustee liaison reports. As is our tradition, we'll start at the, my left.
Let's see, far left, yeah. A couple things of interest, uh, the, uh, tree commission is going to try to be gathering some information together about, um, two different issues, actually, one of which is the Emerald Ash Borer infestation, and the state DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, has in fact significantly widened the, um, corrodine zone, and combined all together into one massive zone that's, if you look at it, the southern tier into this area, it's a very large area of the state now, and there are a lot of restrictions in terms of, uh, uh, you know, moving materials, logs and stuff like that, there's even restrictions for a certain point in, in the season for moving chipped material. Usually they think that chipped material kills off everything, but there's a little window where, of about four weeks, that you can't even move that.
It's a pretty big window.
Wow.
They consider the job, isn't it?
So anyways, uh, that, I think that the, it's very critical, because, uh, these lower areas of, uh, New York State, you know, the, uh, the counties and into, uh, New York City, has some of the highest concentration of ash trees, uh, anywhere else in the state, and so we're talking in some areas, up to 40% of the tree count, it'd be ash. So, significantly, we're going to be posting, uh, I'm working with the tree commission to be posting stuff on the website about it, so people can have some more information directly from the source, and, um, the other item which is starting to become an issue, and I'm actually going to go to a workshop on this, is oak wilt. So we have now something attacking the oak trees.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, exactly.
Cyber was bad.
The cyber attack.
So, uh, we'll get more information on that, but, uh, also the tree commission, as, as always, invites people to come, get involved, they're looking for, uh, folks to be tree commissioners, to help process, uh, the permits that come through, and help make decisions about, um, uh, what kind of replanting might be, uh, appropriate and so forth. And the only other thing I was going to say, I guess I forgot something else, but, um, I did forward, uh, I've started working on that, uh, card for the, the blower, I figured out what to do, by the way, about the Spanish translation, but that's a different thing. But I did forward some of that material to the, uh, to a couple of landscapers, and also to MJ Wilson, so they could at least have gotten a copy of it. I don't know if they're paying attention, you know, to, uh, to the stuff that gets posted through the agenda or not, so now they, now they have a copy of that, and can look at it and give us comments. Excellent.
I just want to say, from what I saw, it looked like a very good visual for people to look at quickly and learn about the, so, thanks.
That's a draft, there'll be changes, I'm sure, before it gets finalized.
The CAD meets tomorrow, Tuesday, at 8:00 at the Senior Center. A week from Tuesday, the Housing Committee will be meeting at 7:30 in the Tiffany Room. Irvington Woods Committee invites you to their first annual garden party fundraiser on Sunday, June 4th, from 5 till 7. The annual sustainability day for the eighth grade class from the middle school will be on Thursday, May 25th, from 9 until noon at the Nature Center. Day camp registration continues. RPAC meets Wednesday, May 24th at 7:00 PM. Irvington Woods Committee meets this Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. Base Committees meeting as we speak to continue their plans for the Spring Fest that Brian spoke so eloquently about.
Can I jump in there, just to mention, the stuff that got canceled this weekend is moved to Madison Park, is what I saw, the birdhouse painting.
So the birdhouse painting.
And herb planting, herb container planting.
Flower and herb boxes. Exactly. Flower and herb boxes this Saturday from 2:00 PM till 5:00 PM at Madison Park, also paint the birdhouse.
Without the bird in it.
You can register for Madison Park Dogs on Leash Program, which starts on May 8th, contact Direct Department, and the Senior Set, the Senior Citizen Center and the Ohio Nature Center are both available for rental for parties and events, contact Laura.
Did you get, did you get the, uh?
Oh, and one more update.
Two important things.
Yes, one we've done, and the second one is, Joe is very pleased to, uh, to tell you that there are five Irvington High School students who will be hosted for senior internships, that's the most we've ever had working in the Recreation Parks Department, they start work tomorrow.
And there's even a sixth that, um, it's not the full internship, but he has an interest in, in joining Army ROTC, and he wants to help out with Memorial Day, so it's got a sixth, he, that's not a longer term thing, I thought it was pretty neat that.
Five and a half.
Yeah, exactly.
And Joe has worked with him, and that wants to, to help with that, so.
Ah, so, I would say to Larry Lonkey, it sounds like a great day in the park, I hope everybody can make it. And on the intern, that reminded me that the, the village is, is starting a relationship with a, a high school student also as an intern, starting this week, um, and we're looking forward to that. And I, there is information about the farmer's market, which starts June 4th, um, Sunday mornings, is, is the summer in the Main Street School, and there's some information about where not to park, um, do you want me to go through that, Brian, are you going to make that, um, available to people? I think you're going to send it out anyway, has to do with, uh, don't park in the Presbyterian Church lot be, um, until after 12 noon, and other details about not parking in the Main Street School lot, except if you're there for the market, um, but it's, I think everybody's looking forward to the market starting afterwards, uh, Sunday morning, um, now until, wow, October, I guess. I have, I have reports from, from Greg Nielsen and from, um, James Englishby, um, the Highway Department, um, actually Mark and I were there, and Larry and Brenda, for the Arbor Day planting, that was, uh, and, and care of trees that had been there, also because they donated the tree, um, and they've been maintaining winter equipment, preparing the spring and summer equipment, cleaning catch basins, oh yeah, I saw the truck today, the back all, assisted the water department with hydrant flushing, line and crosswalk painting, and filling potholes, and the, um, the water department is always reading their water meters and doing spring maintenance now, um, they finished installing stork fittings on the hydrants, um, they began flushing the fire hydrants, um, refurbishing properties on Roland and Erie from sewer emergencies, um, cleaned, organized in inventory storage areas, working on the cross connection control program, I'm not sure I know what that is, but it's, it sounds like it's something, I don't know what we're doing, that one. But, um.
Make sure the clean water hasn't, I mean, the dirty water doesn't get backed up into the.
Ah, I knew it was important, or Jim wouldn't be doing it. Um, I don't have any report from the theater, um, I know they had a, um, a clock tower performance this past weekend, that was, um, yeah, forget, yes, but, um, and, um, you know, yeah, I've certainly reported on the historic districts, and I guess that would be the end of my report.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, on the fire department, um, in April, the Irvington Volunteer Firefighters responded to 39 calls for fire and rescue, and that makes it 124 calls year to date. On April 7th, mutual aid to Tarrytown for Marine 4 injured construction worker rescue from the new Tappan Zee Bridge, and on April 10th, mutual aid to Elmsford for a fire in the Westchester Plaza Corporate Complex, um, nothing of any significance in any of the other incidents. Department training on Tuesday, April 18th, 18 firefighters performed search and rescue techniques at the county training center. Under heavy simulated smoke conditions, each team made entry through separate entrances, one team climbed the interior stairs and searched for mannequins placed as victims, and the second team made entry by laddering a second floor window, entering the window and conducting a search. And eight firefighters took an eight hour refresher course on pump operations, which included review of firetrons, pump components, testing and operations, as well as hands-on drafting and pumping operations. And the only thing I will say briefly about the school, the preschool carnival was not daunted by the torrential rainstorm last Saturday, a lot of little kids there having a wonderful time, and you've heard it before, but one more time, please vote for the school budget tomorrow, Tuesday, um, at the Main Street School.
Um, yes, it's from 7 to 9.
7:00 to 9:00 PM.
Okay, is that right, I think it's 9 or 8?
I think it's 9.
I think it's 9 also, but, it sounded right when I said it, I think it's 7 to 9 at the Main Street School. Um, and there's actually, again, that special vote for, uh, expanding the school board, which is a once in a lifetime, since we get, you know, 9, I guess, but, but it's probably not likely, so that's an interesting one. Next is the village administrator's report.
Uh, just a reminder that you will have the pleasure of being back here on Wednesday again for a, uh, working group wrap-up meeting, so, by the looks of it, the working groups have been very busy, so you'll have a lot to look at and a lot to listen to.
Now, that's, uh, it's going to be recorded, it's not open to the public, it's just for, but it will be recorded?
It'll be recorded, hopefully, um, there's not a lot of crosstalk, which is one of the problems with the recordings, but, um, you know, should capture most of it, and, uh, that's it, and we have three other dates that we have to work out, so, for those of you who haven't responded yet to the survey, please do, surveys.
That's your line?
Yep.
Board of trustees report?
Tonight?
Board of trustees report. Public comment.
Well, where's our Twitter feed?
Review, review of action items, uh, so, uh, passion items, not comments.
Passion items?
I can't, I can't.
Public comment and review of public, passion items, that's it.
Yes, um, so we'll be notifying about the leaf blower law, the larger commercial properties, as was suggested, um, it was also suggested to notify landscapers proactively at this point, I'm not sure if you want that done or not, that came from the public.
We, I, the GPTF used to have a spreadsheet of that, we, it still may be available of, of, uh, local.
But do you want it done, that's my, my main question, we'll figure out how to get it done, but.
I think this should be notified.
It can't hurt.
Okay, all right, and, um, the website will be updated correctly to link the historic district design guide and recommendations, and the local law together, so that they will be accessible separately, but, uh, from the same location, and, uh, I just made a note to myself, I'm not sure if this qualifies, but the mayor's desk newsletter will include something about the walk safe PSA, we'll make sure that happens.
And the, um, the parking about the.
The, the, uh, farmer's market in general, yeah.
Yeah, in the, yeah.
Having my notes.
Farmer market.
Okay, so you're.
That's the farmer's market, yeah, exactly.
Did Larry get that message?
All right, you have that covered.
And I'll partly direct Alan Richardson to you to get web access for the, for updating the tree committee, uh, tree con pages, to add something about, uh, the EAB stuff. Otherwise, I'm going to be the one doing it, so I'm going to see if we can get him involved.
Sure.
I will make a motion to adjourn, can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.